The eleventh day of the second special session of the 21st Congress will now come to order. May we all stand for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Aritz. Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre. Senator Coulent. Floor Leader Harper. Senator Kohnman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Kneth. Senator Pellic. Senator Perman. Senator Romelow. Senator Orsmao. Senator Welly. Speaker Semenon. Mrs. Speaker, 12 members are present.
Okay, we have quorum to transact business. Let the record reflect that Chairman Romelow is now in the chamber. Reading of the Journal. Floor Leader.
Speaker, thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members, as well as our staffs and all those who are observing our session this morning. I again move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the Journal. Those in favor of that motion say yes. A voice no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item.
Item five, Presidential Communications, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item six, F.S.M. Supreme Court Communications, none. Item seven, Member Communications, also none. Item eight, Departmental Communications, none. Item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, receipt of one and its number 21-09.
Assigned to Chief Clerk, next item.
Item 10, State Communications, none. Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications, also none. Item 12, Municipal or Town Communications, none. And item 13, Foreign Government Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Point of privilege, Mrs. Speaker.
Floor Leader Harper, state your point.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I rise on a point of privilege to ask the intelligence of this Congress to join me in welcoming two of our constituents who are observing our session this morning. Let me start off with Mr. Puey Marlik, the Speaker of the Ta Council. And along with him is Mr. Adar Arjin, one of our traditional chiefs on the Ta Island. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
Thank you, Floor Leader Harper. I don't know what they're doing here. Their island is devastated by typhoon. They should be helping cleaning up our island. Okay, any other point of privilege?
Mr. Speaker. Good morning, Mr. Speaker and honorable members, staff. I would like to follow suit, rising on a point of privilege, to also introduce one of our constituents from Kooshai. And may I introduce Foster Naina. My ask that we give him a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Pellic, of course. Our citizens are always welcome to observe our session. Okay, any other point? If none, there's no further. Let's go down to the order of the day. Item 14, Chief Clerk.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, for item 14, Standing Committee Reports, there are none.
Next.
Item 15, Special Committee Reports, none also, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 16, Assignment Measures and Communications, we have a referral sheet, number 21-16.
Okay, members and especially Chairman, take a look at that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item 17, Unfinished Business, we have certain bills. The first one is CP number 21-43 for second reading.
Chairman Orsmao.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I move that -- can we defer it to tomorrow? I move that this bill pass second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CP number 21-43 on second and final reading. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, debate is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritz. Chairman Aritz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, we have four states voted in favor.
Okay. Next bill is -- is Mrs. Speaker. Short resist. Congress back in session, next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-44 for second reading.
Chairman Orsmao.
I then move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP 21-44. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
CP number 21-44 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-45 for second reading.
So move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CP number 21-45 on second and final reading. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
Okay, next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, the next bill is CP number 21-46 for second reading.
Again, Mrs. Speaker, I move for the passage of the bill.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CP number 21-46 on second and final reading. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
CP 21-46 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-47 for second reading.
Okay, Chairman Orsmao.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number 21-47. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, personal objection? Discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
CP number 21-47 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
The next bill, Mrs. Speaker, is CP number 21-86, I mean 48, for second reading.
Orsmao.
Passage of the bill.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP 21-48. Discussion. Chairman Figuerre, short resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Next bill. Okay. Roll call, Chief Clerk.
Senator Aritz for State of Chuk. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
Okay, CP number 21-48 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-49 for second reading.
Okay, Chairman Orsmao.
So move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP 21-49. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote by roll call of delegations.
Chairman Aritz for State of Chuk. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted for.
Okay, that reason, CP number 21-49 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 21-50 for second reading.
Okay, Chairman Orsmao.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of the bill on second and final.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP 21-50. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations.
State of Chuk, Chairman Aritz. State of Pompeii, Chairman Perman. State of Kooshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmao. Mrs. Speaker, all states voted for.
Okay, CP number 21-50 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Okay, before we continue on the other bill, which is a different, I would like to give yield the -- give the floor to Chairman Figuerre. You want to make a motion to suspend relative to our actions? Okay, short resist, subject to call of the chair.
I believe that's a different kind of bill, so can we read here the title?
Okay. Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number 21-55. It's a bill for an act to further amend public law number 20-141 as amended by public laws numbers 20-145, 20-163, 20-164, 20-190, and 21-05 by amending section six thereof to change the allotment of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in the state of Ponte and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Fergie.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded, then Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21-55. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker.
Senator Palick.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a floor amendment to offer on CB number 21-55, and it's a lengthy amendment, but the purpose of the amendment is to change the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated under this act for the state of Cochrane, and I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and seconded that the offer for amendments to CB 21-55 by Senator Palick be adopted because of its length. We will dispense with its reading. For Leader Harper, any rules suspended?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move to suspend any rule that may impede our action on the bill, especially the one requiring prohibiting substantive amendment on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading, be suspended. Those in favor say yes, or no motion carried. So continue discussion on the offer for amendments. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed on the offer for amendments, so let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offer for amendments to CB number 21-55 as offered by Senator Palick say yes. A both no, motion carried. The offer for amendments are adopted. We have CD one. Any further discussion on CD one? If none, there's no objection. Discussion is closed, so let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Artos. State of Ponte, Chairman Perman. State of Cochrane, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmal. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states vote a four.
CB number 21-55, CD one has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next. Any other unfinished business?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. There's no objection. We will now move down to next item, item 18. That's the bill calendar, first bill.
Mrs. Speaker, CB number 21-13 under bill calendar, CD one for second reading. CB number 21-13, CD one. It's a bill for an act to require annual reporting for all programs and projects funded by foreign financial assistance or by United States federal program funds by adding a new subsection three to section 226 of title 55 of the Code of the Federated States on Micronesia as annotated and amended and for other purposes.
Chairman Perman. Move to pass on second and final reading. It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21-13, CD one. Have you read the title, Chief Kirk? Okay. Discussion.
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Perman.
Yeah, thank you very much, Speaker. Good morning to you, honorable members, and those who are observing our session this morning from the gallery. Mrs. Speaker, I have a floor amendment to offer on the said bill, CB 21-13, CD one. I believe the copy has been made and distributed to all members. It's basically giving the time to submit report and a little bit of paracuda teeth. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the offer for amendments to CB 21-13, CD one by Chairman Perman be adopted. You want to read that into the -- is it short enough? Short, resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Perman, you still have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I have a floor amendment to offer, Mrs. Speaker, that dated on July 24, 2019, CB 21-13-CD one. So move.
You move to withdraw that?
Withdraw and place.
Okay.
Move to withdraw.
Any second. It's move and seconded that the offer for amendment to CB 21-13, CD one by Chairman Perman, dated July 24, be withdrawn. If there is no objection to that, it is withdrawn. And Chairman Perman, you still have the floor. Offer your new amendment.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, for that understanding. I have a floor amendment to -- for the amendment that been withdrawn to CB number 21-13, CD one, that dated on the 7, 26, 19. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CB number 21-13, CD one by Chairman Perman, dated July 26, be adopted. Are we still good with our suspension on rules?
I presume.
Okay. Let the record reflect that the relevant rules are still suspended. Discussion on the offered amendments. Speaker. For Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Just a minor question to clarify my stupid brain. On item B, I don't seem to clearly understand the meaning of this because this seems to talk about continuous funding. What about new funding? What report will they do if we're going to receive a new funding?
Chairman.
Do I get myself clear?
I don't know. Short resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing the offer for amendment to CB 21-13, CD one. Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
I have an oral amendment to the amendment.
Proceed.
Here. We're on A, parentheses, A, where it says, "A, final expenditures," you add "and performance." And a report is still there. "And performance," just add on that one. So move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments to the pending four amendments be adopted. Discussion on it. Yes, for Leader Harper.
Just a minor question again. So when we add the word "performance," the word "report" will be pluralized or just singular? Because if it's "report," only one report, that means that report will combine those two. But if it's pluralized, then there has to be two reports, one for performance and one for...
Yes, Speaker, that's the intention. To submit the report on both the financial and the performance of that project.
I think that makes sense. That makes sense, okay. Any other discussion? If none, there's no objection. Let's vote on the offered oral amendments. Those in favor of the offered oral amendments to the pending four amendments say yes. A both no, motion carried. The offered oral amendments are adopted. We are continuing discussion on the offered four amendments as amended. Any further discussion on it? If none?
Mr. Speaker.
Senator Christian, you have the floor.
I don't know where we could insert this, but language so that these federal programs' managers, when they see members of Congress enter the plane, that they would stand up and offer their upgraded seats.[1285.41][1285.41](Laughter).
Stop being a grumpy whatever.
I'm just jealous, that's all.
Okay, okay, continuing discussion. If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the offer for amendments to CB number 21-13, CD one as amended once say yes. Both no, no motion carried. The offer for amendments as amended are adopted. We now have CD two. Okay, any other discussion on CD two? If none, there's no objection. Debate, there is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Kirk.
State of Chuk, Chairman Artos. State of Ponte, Chairman Perman. State of Cochrane, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmal. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states vote a four.
For that reason, CB number 21-13, CD two has passed Congress on second and final reading. Okay, next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number 21-57 for second reading. Okay. Mr. Speaker, CB number 21-57 is a bill for an act to further amend public law number 17-36 as amended by public laws numbers 17-48, 17-78, 17-87, 18-36, 18-60, 18-65, 18-84, 19-22, 19-109, and 20-17 by amending section six thereof to change the lap state of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in the state of Chuk and for other purposes.
Chairman Fergie.
So move on second and finally.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21-57. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, if there's no objection, discussion is closed. Chief Kirk, roll call of delegations.
State of Chuk, Chairman Artos. State of Ponte, Chairman Perman. State of Cochrane, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Orsmal. Mrs. Speaker, four states vote a four.
CB number 21-57 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Chairman Ramallo.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Motion to withdraw and place on today's calendar, CB number 21-03, which was deferred.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21-03. Read the title, Chief Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, CB number 21-03 is a bill for an act to provide for the selection of delegates and procedures for the Constitutional Convention approved in the referendum of March 2019 and for other purposes.
Okay, discussion.
Short resist, Speaker.
Short resist, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Ramallo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Motion to withdraw, CP number 21-03 on today's -- to withdraw and place on today's.
Just place, because it's before the Congress.
So motion to place on today's calendar.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that CP number 21-03 be placed on the bill calendar for second reading action. Those in favor of that motion say yes. A both no, motion carried. CP number 21-03 is now placed on the bill calendar for second reading action. Okay, Chairman Ramallo.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I also wish to offer...
Motion for passage?
Motion for passage of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21-03. Short resist, subject to call of the chair. Let's get back to business. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing CP number 21-03. Chairman Ramallo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I also make a motion to offer a floor amendment. It's kind of lengthy, but it has been distributed to members. So move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that the offer for amendments to CB number 21-03 by Chairman Ramallo be adopted because of its length. We will dispense with its reading, and the relevant rules, specifically the rules requiring -- I mean prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading are still suspended up to this point. So discussion on that. So discussion on that. Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Romano, take the lead.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Mainly the amendment was based on the consensus and understanding that we have in discussion. The first, the amendments were mainly to define the composition of delegates, the, also the reduction of the numbers, and also to remove the reserved seats that was also in the bill. And then the dates, to moving the dates earlier than what is in the proposed bill. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Romano, for the explanations. Okay, Chairman Orsmal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may, can you at least help me with the, to recall? So now the number of delegates will be how many from each? And the total number? Is it one at large from each of the, two at large from all four states? And then one from election districts? Or one at large and two from each election districts?
Thank you, Chairman Orsmal. You're really getting lazy. You should read, you know, the amendments in conjunction-
The amendment, I just saw it in the package this morning, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so-
So you can help me understand it.
Granted, yes. Okay, Chairman Romano, please help out our panel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the floor amendment, the first page, line two, line two, it says, please, page one, line eight, line 12, delete 12 and insert 11. One will be from the at-large seat and two from each congressional districts.
Okay. Does that answer your question? So instead of the refers, as you said, it's the opposite. One at large and then two from each of the election districts. So Yap should have three. One at large and two from the election district. Same in Kusai, yes. Short recess, subject to call off the chair while Chairman Orsmal is thinking.[755.94][755.94](Laughter).
Back in session, we're still discussing the offer for amendments by Chairman Romolo. If there is no further discussion on it, okay, debate is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of the offer for amendments to CP 21 dash 03 offered by Chairman Romolo, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. The offered amendments are adopted. We now have CD 1. Okay? Any further discussion on CD 1? Questions being called for? There is no objection. Debate is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Kirk?
State of chief, Chairman Aratos. State of Bombay, Chairman Perman. State of Kuchai, Chairman Wali. State of Yab, Chairman Orsmal. Mr. Speaker, three states voted for.
Okay. The CP number 21 dash 03, CD 1, has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next view, Chief Kirk.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker. Yes, Senator Aridos.
Point of privilege.
State your point.
I wish to introduce some of our constituents who are observing our session.
Please do so.
This morning. Start with the mayor of Ramanu, Mr. Tom Ebor. His traditional leader, John Peruda, and advisor, Shodaro Ebd. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Let's give them round of applause.
Thank you, my very important constituents, along with Senator Aridos. Thank you for joining us this morning. We appreciate your presence. Mr. Speaker. Yes, Senator Palik.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would also like to introduce two very important people to me, sitting in the gallery. I'd like to introduce first my auntie, Nita Freddie, and my lovely wife, of course, Adelida Palik. May I ask that we give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Palik, for introducing those important people in your life and as part of our audience this morning. Okay? Any other point of privilege?
Speaker.
Yes. State your point.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also wish for Congress to recognize the presence of our staff from the delegation office, Mr. Auntie Chor, who is sitting in the gallery. You know, I must register my jealousy here because I don't have anyone, so I'm introducing our staff. Thank you.
Well, you're indebted to Mr. Chor for taking care of you in Geneva, so you must do the introduction.
Well, yes, and I thank you too, Mr. Speaker, for allowing our staff to accompany the delegation. Mr. Chor, ready, help. Otherwise, I would probably not be here because of very infected lake when we were on the trip. It got worse. Lucky thing, I'd like also to thank a lady, Tru Lam, who, because of her expertise in medicine, a doctor, medical doctor, who was very helpful in making sure that my infection was taken care of. So thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, Chairman Wali, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also want to introduce, on behalf of the Yab delegation, Sandus from their own office.
Oh, yes. Of course. So Sandus will not accompany Chairman Orsmal when we were introduced during the inauguration?
Speaker, I would like to ask that Lam would learn from the other staff, because last time we went to Qatar, he ran away from you.
That's Lam. Okay, let's continue. Any other point of privilege? If none, if there's no objection, we will now go down to item 19. That's the resolution calendar, first resolution.
Mr. Speaker, the first resolution is functional resolution number 20 dash 40 for adoption, CR number 21 dash 40. It's a resolution requesting the President of the Federated States of Micronesia to establish an embassy for Federated States of Micronesia in Canberra, Australia.
Okay. Florida Harbor.
Move for the adoption of the said resolution.
Okay, it's moved and seconded at Congress, adopt resolution number 21 dash 40. I would like to apologize to Chairman Wali. I thought it was the kind of resolution that just came in, but I didn't realize it's assigned to your committee, so I didn't give you the privilege to. Okay. All right, any discussion on the questions being called for? So if there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 40, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. Resolution number 21 dash 40 is adopted by Congress.
Mr. Speaker.
Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Senator Christian.
First, I'd like to show my appreciation for the passage of that resolution, and then I'd like to move that the next resolution be deferred to the next session of Congress.
Okay. Second. It's been moved and seconded, that resolution number 41. Short recess subject to call of the chair.
Organizations are home.
Sure, yes. I think that's a balancing act that we need to look at.
But we need to also look at the EU.
There is a motion, so let's go back. Mr. Speaker, before we fold on the motion, we try to second it.
Well, you know, we talk about, because some of us went there, we should also look back, and I, for one, say that some of us go to other places and offices are established. Some of us go to other meetings and made promises about paying certain things, and payment were made, so nothing wrong with your two-man delegation and two-staff delegation to Geneva, making an effort to establish an office in Geneva.
Your name is already recorded in the Geneva records that you have championed. Yeah, that you're championing this, so it's not that we're doing away with it. We'll just defer according to the motion. Okay? If there is no objection, let's vote. Those in favor, the motion to defer CP, CR number 21 dash 41 to the next session of Congress, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried, so CR number 21 dash 41 is deferred to the next session of Congress. Next resolution. Speaker.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Wali.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have three resolutions that I wish to move to withdraw and place on.
Short recess.
Resolution calendar for action.
Before we proceed, short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Wali, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the floor to Chairman Perman.
Okay, the floor is being yielded to you, Chairman Perman, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, external affairs. Mr. Speaker, I have five resolutions to withdraw and place on the resolution calendar for today. Congressional resolution 21 dash 23, 21 dash 37, 21 dash 38, 21 dash 42, and 21 dash 47. So move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded, that the following resolutions, number 23, 37, 38, 42, and 47 be withdrawn from committee.
Speaker, correction, 43, not 47.
And 43 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. Resolutions number 23, 37, 38, 42, and 43 are now withdrawn and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We are on the resolution calendar. Vice Speaker Moses, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members, and those who are observing our session today. I wish to withdraw and place CR number 21 dash 33 for action on today's resolution calendar.
It's been moved and seconded, that resolution number 21 dash 33 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay, have you consulted with the Chairman of the Committees?
Some of our colleagues have.
Okay. Fair enough.
What's the time?
Fair enough, so let's vote, those in favor of the motion, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried, so resolution number 21 dash 33 is now placed on the resolution calendar for action. Okay, we now have two for six resolutions. Let's start with the first one, Chief Kirk, 23.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have functional resolution number 21 dash 23 for adoption. CR number 21 dash 23 is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of under $30,000 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Services Administration, to fund and support the Emergency Medical Services for Children program in the FSM, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Perman.
So move for adoption.
It's moved and seconded, and Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 23. Okay, discussion? Any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called for? If there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 23, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. Resolution number 21 dash 23 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have a functional resolution number 21 dash 37 for adoption. CR number 21 dash 37 is a resolution congratulating Jennifer Tokun Cheng for gold medal achievements at the 2019 Pacific Games.
Okay, Chairman, forget it.
Pro move.
It's been moved and seconded, Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 37. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Senator Christian.
First, let me join those who have, and extend my personal congratulations to this young lady for her achievements, and I am in support of a resolution to express Congress's appreciation for what she has achieved. However, I think that while the resolution is well, it documents well what her achievements are, that I really feel that a better drafting effort could have been given to the resolution than what it is right now. But given our time and the fact that we're ending today, may I offer some effort at amending some of the language here? Mr. Speaker.
Yes, proceed.
I'd like to venture, and before I make a motion, what I'd like to do on line three is not to say that Cheng won the gold medal. I'd like to say that was a gold medalist. In line five, I think Ms. Cheng was selected to 2014 FSM Athlete of the Year, and in line nine, I don't think she was selected the best female. I think she was selected the best athlete, female athlete, because the language in the current resolution says she was awarded best female at the 2015 Pacific Games. I didn't realize that there was a pageant going on. And for the whereas that says, starts at 17, word says, "Her achievements made their country proud." Now therefore, I'd like to venture that we say Ms. Cheng's exemplary achievements in sports shines well for her and for the people of the FSM. That's the kind of semantic change I'd like to offer, but I don't. Short recess, please.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Senator Christian, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. After the discussion during recess, I'd like to venture the following motion as amendment to the resolution, resolution 21 37, congratulating Jennifer Tokun Cheng for her achievements. In line three, delete the words, the phrase "won the gold medal" and insert "was a gold And after, on line four, Pacific Games, no, no, delete that.
Line five.
Line five, insert the word "selected" between the words "was" and "the," and line six, insert the word, the phrase, delete the phrase "won the gold medal," insert "was a gold medalist." And line seven, delete the word "as" and insert the word "becoming," so that it would read "becoming the first Micronesian female athlete to win a gold medal." Line nine, insert the word "athlete," and that's why I'd like to ask for a recess at the moment, Mr. Speaker. Short recess, please.
Short recess subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session.
On line nine, I reassert that the word "athlete" should be inserted between the words "female" and "at," and delete the warehouse, not warehouse, whereas, beginning line 17, and insert the following in lieu thereof, whereas Ms. Cheng's exemplary achievements in sports shines well for her and for the people of the FSM. Now therefore. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded, that the offered oral amendments by Senator Christian be adopted. Discussion on those, please. Senator Christian, pass on your notes that you're reading from to Chief Kirk once we're done, to help them put together your oral amendments. Any further discussion on the offered oral amendments? If none, there is no objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote, those in favor of the adoption of the offered oral amendments to resolution 21 dash 37, say yes. Oppose, no. Motion carried. Those offered oral amendments are adopted. We have now CD 1. Okay, any further discussion on CD 1?
Mr. Speaker, point of privilege.
State your point.
My point of privilege at this point is, we just passed this resolution to congratulate this young lady. Is that it?
We haven't passed it. We're still.
I mean, if we did, we're not going to give her something more substantial than just, hey, thank you and congratulations?
That's for another time. That's for another time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, there was a motion for the previous question. If there is no objection, debate is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 37, CD one, say yes. A vosno, motion carried, said resolution is now adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have congressional resolution number 21 dash 38. This is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of $282,682 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to fund and support the FSM Hospital Preparedness Program for the fiscal year 2019, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Berman?
I saw move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 38. Discussion.
Speaker.
Yes, Florida Leader Harvard?
I have to apologize to my chairman because I'm a member of his committee, but I believe either I was not in the hearing or I failed to ask the meaning of this hospital preparedness. Is it something to do with emergency or?
Short recess. Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still discussing resolution 21 dash 38. Questions to be called for. If there's an objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 38, say yes. A vosno, motion carried, resolution number 21 dash 38 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Kirk.
Mr. Speaker, we have congressional resolution number 21 dash 42 for adoption. CR number 21 dash 42 is a resolution expressing the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to Mrs. Sina Net Lawrence for her dedicated service to the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia.
Okay, Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the adoption of the resolutions?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 42. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there's no objection, debate is closed. Let's vote those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 42, say yes. A vosno, motion carried, resolution number 21 dash 42 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have congressional resolution number 21 dash 43 for adoption. CR number 21 dash 43 is a resolution expressing the profound appreciation of the 21st Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia to the Honorable Alec El Alec for his dedication and public service to his nation.
Okay.
So move for adoption.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 43. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 43, say yes. A vosno, motion carried, resolution number 21 dash 43 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mr. Speaker, we have, I mean, I'm sorry, congressional resolution number 21 dash 33 for adoption. CR number 21 dash 33 is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of STR 27,600,000 from the World Bank for the purpose of funding the maritime investment projects in the Federated States of Micronesia to improve the safety, efficiency, and climate resilience of maritime infrastructure and operations, as well as emergency crisis and response in the Federated States of Micronesia, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman RND, net?
So move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's moved and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 21 dash 33. Discussion, any discussion? Florida Leader Harvard?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to extend my apology to Vice Speaker because I'm intending to divert this resolution to September session because I think we really need hearing on this as we have not had much information relative to this resolution, especially this grant. We want to know the breakdown of it and if there is a deadline for approval of this and many more other questions that we need to learn from the appropriate agency or department or office handling this grant. So if I may not be out of order, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, short recess. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Florida Leader, you're okay now?
Yeah, I'm okay now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the resolution?
Question.
Questions being called for. If there's an objection, discussion is closed. Let's vote those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 21 dash 33, say yes. A vosno, motion carried, resolution 21 dash 33 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, there you have it. Any other resolution, other business? If none, let's move on.
May I excuse now?
Yes, you may be excused, Florida Leader Harvard. Okay. Next item.
Mr. Speaker, item 20, introduction of bills and resolutions.
Okay, if you have any measure, introduce them, pass them on to Chief Clerk for introduction. Next item.
Item 21, miscellaneous communications. There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item 22, miscellaneous business.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker.
Do you have any miscellaneous business? Yes, Senator Christian?
One second recess.
Okay. Congress is back. Session, we're on the miscellaneous business.
Point of privilege, Mr. Speaker.
State your point.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise on a point of privilege to recognize two of our citizens, actually from Pompe, working for Pompe state government, Prenta Hadley Abraham and Josephine Paul. Can we give them a round of applause?
Thank you for introducing two of our citizens. They're always welcome to join and observe our session. Okay, any other miscellaneous business?
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Speaker, Moses?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to venture a motion that the Speaker and the Speaker alone review the journal for the past several days and make the necessary changes and approval. I saw move, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that the presiding officers, as required by the rules, can review and approve our records, journals, and other items after session. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. A vosno, motion carried, so be it. That's the announced thing, we're taking care of it. I just wanted to say a few things, you know.
Before you conclude, Mr. Speaker, I just also have a very.
Proceed.
Yes.
It's miscellaneous business time.
I like to take this opportunity to thank the Chairman of the Committee on Health and Social Affairs for moving the resolutions approving U.S. federal grants, especially in the area of health. I do hope that staff from that department are listening and looking so that they would know that Congress has adopted the resolutions on the grants and to start working so that next time they apply, they will come with, with a report, expenditure and performance report within 30 days after the programs are. And also, I really thank the Florida Leader for allowing Congress to move forward on the grant, though we have problem with it because some problems with it. It had not been, when it didn't go through the process of application, the application review and approve by Congress prior to the submission to World Bank. I hope that in the future, when we have big grants like this, that Congress is in the loop as to the nation's efforts to improve things. This was discussed in February and for some unknown reason, it wasn't brought to our attention, including our own state people not informing their delegations of this application, only through looking around that we were able to find the needed information, though some of it were included in the presidential communication, communicating this grant. Lastly, I again wish to thank you and Anti for the trip to Geneva, they really helped, and I hope that when yours truly traveled, that you would also allow our staff to travel with me so I can be help on the plane, at the hotels and restaurants and so on. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Rusmon. Of course, we will continue to support members in their travel and business of their committees or Congress, and if it requires having staff to be with you, we will also do that, all contingent on funding if we have to. Okay, I will just say a few things. You know, I would like to thank Chairman Figueroa for restarting the conversation on our tax reforms. It is something that we, you know, missed out on the past few years, but I'm grateful that, yes, we introduced two bills, one on the URA and one on the net, net tax, net income tax, so the conversation can be started. I would urge all members to go out with the communities and go to our businesses, to our state leaders, to restart that conversation. I think it is high time that we readdress that issue on tax reform. I thank Chairman Rusmon, I mean, not Rusmon, Chairman Ramelow. Chairman Ramelow for shepherding the CONCON bill, and now that is passed by Congress, we look forward to getting our people together under one roof to continue to discuss and address the national issues that are facing our country. I was very encouraged by a clip that I, you know, I was watching this morning, the hearing with the U.S. Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee. It is very encouraging, and all I can say is that we in the Congress should also do our part to make sure that what's required of us, what's needed from us, we should do it to continue to firm up or strengthen our relationship with our partner, friend, the United States. So those are just a few things I want to conclude with our special session. Any other point of, I mean, miscellaneous business?
Mr. Speaker.
Yes?
Thank you.
Senator Paddock?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Couple days ago, I reported that our own trust fund was at 214 million, and we received the latest report, the fund has appreciated to 261 million, but that was from February to May, and that's very encouraging, that's excellent report. We see an appreciation in our own trust fund, but I would ask that the report be expanded to include the rate of return, because you could put the figure there, what's the percentage increase over that period of time, first of all, and secondly, against the benchmark. Even though we see an appreciation in the fund, how are we doing against the benchmarks? That's the really important measurement that we should be looking for. But I applaud the performance, our staff are doing an excellent job in monitoring the program. I think we all should be very encouraged with the performance of our own trust fund, and hopefully, again. and hopefully, again, I think it's incumbent upon us to appoint the members to the, or act on the nomination to the Compact Trust Fund Committee. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, Speaker. Short recess, subject to go off the chair. Congress is back in session. Thank you, Senator Palick, for the concerns, the information you shared. Any other miscellaneous? If none, let's go to announcement. Chairman Rundt.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Some members and staff met for lunch at Riverside last Saturday and decided that it was a good thing to bow wow once in a while, so today, after a session, your committee on HSA is hosting lunch at Cliff to bow wow further. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Oh, thank you very much, Chairman. Well, members, especially Chairman, are becoming very generous these days. I don't know what's gotten into them, but it's a good thing, it's a good thing. Chairman Figueroa? No announcement? Chairman Net? Chairman Burnet?
Your committee on HSA will go into sleep mode. No announcement.
Thank you. Chairman Conman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. No announcement from your special committee on climate change.
Okay, Chairman Rusomel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your committee on education will be joining the External Affairs Committee for a joint hearing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Vice Speaker Moses, you have any announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement, but I just wanted to express my sincere thanks to you and members, especially our staff, for the work that they've performed for us during this session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Moses, for extending our appreciation, as always, to our staff. Okay, Senator Palick? Okay, Senator Arreza? If none, so before we go into a German acting floor, you're designated as acting floor. Okay, make your motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress, this Congress stands adjourned. Sign and die.
Okay, it's been moved, any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress adjourned, sign and die before, let's vote. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Oppose, no. May we all stand? I hereby declare this second special session of the 21st Congress adjourned, sign and die.[1794.21][1794.21](APPLAUSE).